We have established a quorum. I move that the board reconvene into an open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to certify?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Whereas the Northumberland County School Board convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires the certification that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting with this certification that applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll for certification? On the line, Ms. Christopher? Mrs. O'Beare?
I certify.
Dr. Davis?
I certify.
Dr. Curran?
I certify.
Ms. Maseek?
I certify.
All right, we will now return to the open meeting. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance in the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and now, Dr. Curran will have the action items from the closed meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm going to bundle some of the action items on supplemental stipends. The LCPS Lead Nurse Stipend for Lori Rice and the Medicaid Assistance Stipend for Haley Deal as presented.
Do I have a second?
I move that we... Can you do it in the form of a motion?
Didn't I say it?
I thought you did.
I said I move.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Do you want a second, Chair?
A second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Continuation, I move that we have a continuation approval for special education supplemental contracts for the 2025 school year for eligibility coordinator Angela Ellis as presented, K through eight child study chair Angela Ellis as presented, NHS Student Support Team Chair Holly Reinert as presented.
Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
I move that we approve the contract with the Public Consulting Group, which is currently our platform for the following: Documentation of Medicaid Documentation and Billing, Section 504 SBIT Child Study, and Pre-Referral and Translation Services for IEP.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
I move for approval of continued speech-language testing support for speech-language pathologist N. Holtsho. Holtsho. Holtsho, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
And I move for approval of Excel Intervention and Therapeutic Services as partnership with MMS.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Hiring of new personnel, I'm going to bundle all of these together. Ania Ball for the NES paraprofessional, cafeteria substitutes Phyllis Coleman, Roberta Drummond, and Denise Barrett, fall coaches, JV volleyball coach Gabriella Thompson, middle school sideline cheer Alice Abernathy, middle school athletic director Jerome Ashton, and substitutes Alexandra Hurt, Amy Reinhardt, Claire Givens, Sandra Kinney, Sheila King, and Monica Thompson, Amaya Ball, and Nancy Jewell, Alyssa Crockett as an MMS paraprofessional, as presented.
Do you hear a second?
A second.
Vote?
Aye.
Also, I move that Carolyn Conway be the music teacher for MMS NHS.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, and vote?
Aye.
And if everyone's reviewed the minutes from July 21st and July 26th of '25, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
All right, and that moves, excuse me, that moves us straight on to presentations. We have JROTC Camp Highlights and the full archery program.
Madam Clerk, can you hear Dr., I mean Mr. Christopher? She's affirmed all the votes up here, I don't know if you can hear it or not.
I just didn't hear certified beginning. She certified.
She just didn't hear the certification at the beginning.
Oh, the certification. Did Betty certify the closed meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is she, is that on your microphone? Okay.
I'm here to present to you the JROTC archery program again. We're excited about the program. We've got everything pretty much.
Turn the mic on because we're recording the session and we have to be able to hear it.
It's a raid.
He's bringing you one.
There you go, because that's. Thank you, Marcus.
There you go. That's better.
I'm here to present to you the archery program. We've been working on this for about three years. The reason why we're excited about it is that it's a program that can reach out to kids that aren't, those kids that are underserved as well. If you look at the presentation I have for you, on the second page, it shows about extracurricular activities and the trend. If you see on this pie chart, there's a specific amount of children who are not athletic, they don't do athletics. So there are other things that we can utilize in JROTC, other programs. We have archery, we have robotics, we have drones, we have a raider program. So right now, we're just trying to start and get some of those going. The archery program is the most important one, of course, because it is going to help us to, first to recruit kids to come into the program, also with something that can be utilized in other schools. If you're not, if you don't know, archery starts in the fifth grade and they can teach kids that, and they have a competition to compete at a national level as well, okay? If you go to the next slide, inadequacy, all right, so if we look right here, this is empowerment perception and essential skills development. So if you look on your left, you see where some kids have inadequate, inadequacy perception of themselves. They don't feel like they may not be as athletic or as good as something what someone else is. If you look in archery, what it does is, it's a walk, it's a crawl-walk phase. You start out just simply going through the motions and teaching them the safety aspect of it. Then you move on to the showing them how they would shoot, dry firing, not with any arrows. And so it teaches them specifics on discipline and safety. If you look on there, the archery program, like you said, you see on the bottom, you have kids that are, yeah, parents on the left and then instructors, we're the ones that are the base to help build the program. We're going to have NHS, MHS, and MMS staff as well, and then administration. So together, we all help empower these kids to get to believe that they can do better, all right? So archery builds self-esteem, resilience, see, it leverages relationship building because you have to deal with a whole lot of different people and expands the future career development because it lets them know that I can do something more, okay? Next slide, please. The safety plan tiers that we have in place, that the instructors have to be in good standing, lawful provision, the school provision, so I have to go get certified to instruct this. I've done it once before, but it's expired. So I would go through that again, the basic archery instructor certification course and be active. At the present time, Rappahannock High School, they have a archery program. They actually have borrowed our arrows, our bows and arrows to go and shoot. They've gone to competition nationally three years in a row. So I already have a little thing going on, we fired with them before at summer camp, we did a camp together with them. And then he's actually, just last week, went to Fort Knox through the Army JROTC program and got certified to teach and instruct other instructors to be certified. So that's one thing we've got in our pocket and they've already agreed that we're going to start working together to make sure this comes to fruition. Students, they have to be in good standing, parents have to have consent for them to do it. They have to complete the prerequisite hours of archery principal equipment safety training prior to shooting training. They complete the safety pledge, they wear proper clothing and gear. And archery is the safest sport in school systems in the nation. And this, they're not, and NASP, they put that all the information out. Training site, y'all know we've got the stand building, we're attempting to do that. So I've got all the equipment that we need minus two nets that the school board required that we have a net on each side to prevent any errant, any errant arrows. So the money for that should be covered in the monies that we donate to Mr. Nutt. So we're pretty much just waiting on permission from y'all to start to get this going, to purchase the equipment that we need so we can get going. Next slide, please. So here you go, it shows on the onboarding phase, all right, so you get administrative time, we have to teach them and let them talk with them about this. Then we go to crawl phase, classroom doctrinal training, two hours academic training, archery basic component knowledge, safety procedure, basic range operation, perform a form of test and description benchmark hand-on assessment. So before they touch an arrow, a bow that has an arrow, they will be trained. Walk phase, five hours of training to archery range, learner's practice, perform tests with guidance, and equipment maintenance, eleven step to archery success, summative assess, assessment. There's an assessment that there are eleven steps that they have to go in order and have it memorized and do it correctly to be certified. And set qualified compete in access or access to ongoing professional development opportunities. So this would allow us to take these kids on trips to competitions that are funded by JROTC already. And that's a big thing for getting these kids out of county. We try to take them different places and do different things with them. Next slide, please. If you, this isn't, the timeline isn't correct because this was done before, I haven't redone it. But that pretty much tells you, we're already at the implementation of the full-scale archery program so that we can move forward. And the next slide, benefits. Once again, benefits for students, health benefits, motivation, handout coordination, self-esteem, increased student opportunities for future scholarships and grants, because there are grants for archery, and enrichment, social skills. For NIH and MMS, it increases skill, sport disciplines, discipline, biggest thing, discipline. It enhances the accreditation for JROTC because we need to, we have to receive a specific amount of points each year to remain viable. And right now, the only thing I've got to do that is our drill team. We missed the drill competition last year, it really hurt us, we had to make up other points, so we have to do different things. We do a lot in the community already, we can turn that all in and get credit, but the big things are the competition teams, archery, raider team, drone, and all that. So it's going to help our program to remain viable. And school division, it'll share funding, resources, US Army to obtain direct support, so you don't have to spend any money because we already got the money. So it's going to build your, pretty much build your community. So I've taken enough of your time, are there any questions that you have for me?
Just excited for it to start.
Yes. So.
A lot of our kids go to the 4H camp and they offer it there and they love it.
Yes, and you see up here, I've already laid out the layout for the archery range one time, but it wasn't the proper tape, so I pulled it up. I've got all the right tape now, all we need to do is just get in and order the nets. And then we have to figure out with maintenance how they're going to hang the nets, that's another thing. But all the money is already there, I think, so we should be good. There will be no expenditures from the county, there's no taxpayer money going toward this, it's all a donation by Mr. Nutt. And the funny thing, and I'm going to throw this out there, I was talking to a son that I still have a really good relationship with, I work with him, I work for him. And he told me the other day, he said, you know, Dad, you would have given y'all more money had we spent the first amount of money. So I just want to put that out there, and Fred and I are really tight, so we tall, and so I'm just letting y'all know that
Okay.
money's tight, but I know someone that may help us out if we need it, if I ever ask, he would do it, so I appreciate you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you for all the work that you put into this because there's a lot of front-end work that I know that you've done.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Do you? Is it appropriate for us to approve this tonight? Since what he's looking, it sounded like he was looking.
Yes.
Is that what you're asking, sir? Okay.
Okay, because it wasn't on our action, I'm sorry. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the JROTC Integrated Archery Pilot Program?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, but?
Aye.
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 All right, so you've got it. Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Very much. Next, we have the Senior Beta National Competition Presentation. Yay. Ms. Baker.
Good evening, my name is Karen Baker and on behalf of Michelle Jennings, my co-sponsor last year and myself, I'm here with Leila Cordova to give you an overview of our national competition that we participated in this over the summer at the Gaylord Palms, June 21st, 2nd to the 25th. So we took six students to national competition of the ones who qualified and participated. We had academic competitions, art competitions, visual arts, group participation in engineering and trading pin. Please. And we placed second in the nation for visual arts, Chloe Brand placed second.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah. So obviously Chloe has graduated, so she is not with us tonight. And we also placed with our trading pin. Do you want to do, who wants to talk about the trading pin or you want me to? So with the trading pin competition, Leila and Chloe designed our Radiate Trading Pin. This is, it's not just a trading pin. This is an opportunity for students to get out of their comfort zone, to go up to strangers and have a conversation and be able to barter, to be able to see which pins they'd like to trade and what their value is. And sometimes you never know what a student or even an adult, because adults trade as well. And it really does help with those negotiation skills. And also saying, no, thank you, I'm not, you know, I want to keep this pin. So those are all good skills and we placed eighth out of seventy-one entries. Also, pretty impressive, small school, big impact. And we also participated in engineering. And Isaac couldn't be with us tonight, but he did write up something that I am going to read. So yes, our engineering team. So this is from Isaac Faulkner. Good evening, I am sorry I couldn't be here in person tonight, but I wanted to share a little about my experience in the engineering competition at the National Beta Convention. The engineering challenge is all about creativity, problem solving, and teamwork. We are given a list of specific supplies and must design and build a course or structure that allows a ball to travel through it. Our design has to include five reactions, moments where one action triggers another, like something hitting an object to start the next step. We had two hours to build our structure and all our supplies had to fit inside one eighteen-gallon tub. When we arrived at the competition, we were given three possible challenges, so this is as the competition starts. They don't know what they're going to do ahead of time. We could choose to do one, two, or all three of those challenges, but we had to complete at least one. We also had to end our design with three cups falling and we had to use the set of, list of mandatory items in the process. One of the challenges involved creating a reaction using air motion. For that, we built a small fan that blew a ball down a ramp. The ball hit a rubber band which stopped it and triggered a marble to roll into the cup. The cup was balanced on an uneven surface, so when it fell, it activated a pulley system. This counted for two of our challenges. The pulley pulled a card which set off a chain of dominoes. The dominoes knocked into a box of playing cards which tipped over into a wheel, causing it to fall on the cups at the end. Not every part worked exactly as planned, but enough worked that the judges appreciated our creativity and our teamwork. And we were able to place ninth in the nation out of thirty-three other teams. It was an amazing experience that challenged us to think outside the box, work together under pressure, and keep trying even when things didn't go perfectly. I'm really proud of our team and grateful for the chance to represent Northumberland High School at Nationals. Thank you for your support, Isaac Faulkner. So yes, out of thirty-three teams, our team placed ninth, again, quite impressive standing. And then, next one? Okay.
Okay, so attending National Beta Convention was one of the best experiences I've personally had because we were surrounded by thousands of people from all across the country who shared the commitment to leadership, academic excellence, and service reminded me what beta truly represents, character, achievement, leadership, and service. I had the chance to compete, collaborate, and learn from others who were just as passionate about making a positive difference in their school and community. It pushed me not only to step outside my comfort zone, but work harder and think bigger about what I can accomplish. Beta isn't just a, it isn't just a club, it's a community that challenges you to strive for excellence, serve with humility, and lead with integrity. This convention showed me the impact those cannot, those about, what those values cannot have only on my future, but on the people around me. We made many new memories, as you mentioned, with the club trading pin. We met a bunch of new faces during Beta Night at Universal in Florida. And then we laughed and we worked all together with Denver Engineering Groups. And with that, we not only became closer with our groups, but we met tons of other groups who had the same kind of interests. This whole experience is something I will forever be grateful and cherish for years to come. For the following school year, we have many plans to serve not only those in our school, but also the community around us, ranging from the Promstress Drive, which we usually do yearly, to the Northern Neck Rocks and Shells where we will paint them with positive messages and either lay them around the school or hand them out. But more info, more info is to come for that. And we also have our positive post-it notes, which we kind of did last year, but I think we should expand a little more on that. So during club time or just any available time after school, any beta member or even people who aren't, you can write names on little post-it notes and write any positive messages and then just put them up around the school. Our beta club is excited to take what we learned both at the state convention and the national convention and put it into action through projects that will benefit those around us. We're planning many activities that promote school spirit, recognize student and teacher achievements, encourage kindness and positivity, and so much more. Our goal is to make our play, our school a place where everyone feels valued and supported. We hope to bring students together through beta and create a strong sense of community for all those who are involved or even interested in the following school years to come.
So, good, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank y'all so much, that's real.
If you haven't seen the display case out by guidance, we're cracking up quite good.
Yeah. All right, next we have Problem Solvers International Convention. All right. We have Ms. Wilkins.
Good evening. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Michelle Jennings. So I'm going to read what Michelle has left and I wanted to also publicly thank her again for coaching our stellar future problem-solving team and taking them to the national competition. She has just done such a wonderful job each year with these kids and she's an amazing coach, so. Good evening, Dr. Leslie, Mrs. Ashton, and the members of the school board, administration, staff, and family members, and friends of the community. I'm excited to share with you some highlights from the Future Problem Solving International Competition held this past June at Indiana University. Our creative writing students competed in the Virginia State Bowl in the spring. We swept two of the three divisions. Jordan Bunn placed first in the middle division and Alistair Cook placed first in the junior division. As reigning state champions, both students were invited to compete at the international level in Indiana. With school board approval, we prepared for this next competition. The world finals competition included students from eleven countries, thirty states, and four Australian states. There were two thousand three hundred and forty attendees and one thousand four hundred sixty-five competitors. Jordan and Alistair created stories on the spot on a provided future scene for the topic, "The Future of History." They had two hours to write their stories, fifteen hundred words or less. While we did not bring home trophies from the international convention, we did bring home experiences, wisdom, and memories from an extraordinary opportunity only offered to qualified students from all over the world. Jordan and Alistair experienced college living as we stayed in a college dorm, complete with shared hall bathrooms and dining hall meals. They attended the Talent Variety Show and participated in the Memento Exchange, bringing home some pretty cool souvenirs from all over the world. We explored the local area while taking in art museums, downtown sites, and a children's museum, and even a movie. We covered a ton of ground walking each day. The opening and closing ceremonies were nothing short of amazing with the flag processionals, excuse me, and presentations. Thank you so much for your support of our program and of our students. Northumberland County has so much to be proud of. Having two state champion writers here in our school system is a testament to the hard work and dedication being put in by our students and staff. Even at the state competition, we are facing competitors from much larger school divisions and magnet schools. We are so very proud of Jordan and Alistair. Congratulations, guys. Now we'll hear a few words from each of them. Jordan and Alistair, if you could come up, please?
Sincere appreciation for your approval, a recent trip to the Future Problem Solvers International Competition. I understand that academic programs don't always garner the same attention or generate the same revenue as athletic competitions. For this, I thank you for recognizing the importance of programs like FPS and for providing such an unique opportunity to compete on an international stage. Personally, the competition is far more than a simple creative writing contest. Personally, the competition is far more than a simple creative writing contest. It allows me to socialize with students, faculty and everyone around the globe. It was true to participate in the event to represent Northumberland High School on the stage. I would certainly wish to find at least a not be this gratitude to Ms. Jennings and Mrs. Wilkins. The success over the past years reflects the massive effort as FPS coaches that speaks volumes about the dedication to the program, the students, the student competitors. Especially, thanks goes to Ms. Jennings, her support, enthusiasm and encouragement personally. You're great at my years of show, enjoy this experience far more than I ever expected. And both of you should, each of us is truly inspiring. Much more than just a coach, she is a true mentor. Thank you, resident members, Mrs. Wilkins and Mrs. Jennings for supporting and championing such an amazing experience. I hope the world encourages to continue to support this program. I hope this lesson is learned from this opportunity and we are looking forward to next year's competition.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the school board for approving this program because, because I liked going to Indiana and meeting new people from different places. And I also want to thank Mrs. Jennings and Ms. Wilkins for constructing the program and uh, helping me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much. All right, and we're moving on to the financial reports. And we have Ms. Deborah Whaley, the Northumberland County Director of Finance with us. Welcome, Ms. Whaley.
Good evening. As it was just stated, I'm the new financial director. And I look forward to working with all of you this coming year. Um, I came on board August first and so I've been trying to get familiar with everything. I started training on the software today and I've been working with Mr. Regan from UHY. Um, as of today, um, there are purchase orders that are waiting approval from UHY. And Mr. Regan, um, I think is going to be um, calling in later uh, today for this meeting to uh, go over some things. And if you have any specific questions concerning the purchase orders, um, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer that for you. Um, and do you have any questions for me?
So we're not going to approve those till he presents in your place? Okay, got it.
The purchase orders, he has to approve those before we can move forward.
Okay, no problem. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you so much, Ms. Whaley.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us. All right, and we'll move on to the donations. So we have donations for approval tonight. We have Zion Church at Lottsburg. They donated the breakfast sandwiches from Hardee's and Amazon gift cards as prizes for our staff for convocation. Then we have the Calio Moose Lodge, who had a very successful pack the bus drive. They donated estimated eight thousand dollars of school supplies for all of our students. And then we have donations from the community of Northumberland for their filling the bus full of school supply donations. So we're very thankful for our community and everyone who donated. That's an awesome, awesome feat. All right, and do I have a motion to approve the donations as approved? All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Vote. All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Leslie.
Okay, good evening. I will be very brief this evening. Uh, we did have a couple of exciting things happen. Obviously, our teachers and staff came back to work uh, over the last two weeks, previous weeks. Um, and we had some great weeks with training and getting ready for class. And today we had a super exciting day because all of our students started their new school year. So it was very exciting to hear student voices in the buildings. The teachers were excited, the students were excited. It was a good day and we have a hundred and seventy-nine more happy days to come, so we're very excited. You know what I'm talking about, teachers, right? Um, so I really just, I just wanted to um, thank everybody for everything they've done to make the first day so successful and then echo uh, the thanks for the donations. The second piece of my report is really financial in nature, um, as Ms. Whaley has joined the team. And then Mr. Regan will be on to go over those pieces, which is an area we have spent most of our time um, in the administration at this point. Um, I did not, um, there are other reports up from our directors, but I did want to take this moment if I could to ask Ms. Latasha Lee to step up, who is our new Director of Human Resources, to be able to introduce herself to the community in her new role.
Ma'am. As Dr. Leslie stated, I am Latasha Lee and I am the new Director of Human Resources. And I want to say that I have hit the ground running. Um, and I, I contribute that to the success of um, Dr. Leslie and Mr. Vonda Ashton. Um, they made sure I was well-prepared when I came to work on my first day. So I thank you all for making sure that I had everything I needed and to access to you all when I had questions, so. Would you like for me to give my report now or you want me to go before? So I do have a report. Um, and we're going to start here, um, with our staffing overview. Um, we had twenty-two new hires. Um, we have two retirements, two resignations, one internal transfers and five promotions. Currently, we have three teaching positions at the elementary school, opening one paraprofessional at the elementary school that's open. Um, and as of tonight, we do not have um, a middle school and high school core position open. So I think middle school is fully staffed, pretty much. I mean, we have one part-time school nutrition um, position open. Um, we're still actively recruiting to, to fill in these vacancies that we have open. Um, recruitment and retention efforts, um, I have an outreach plan to reach out to RCC to um, do some recruitment collaborations there. Um, and our presentation was successfully hosted um, during the month of July, the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. We introduced policies, benefits and expectations and was received very well from our new employees. Um, professional development, um, HR onboarding workshop conducted for all the new employees, covering benefits, code of conduct and payroll procedures. Um, I have four-year training set up for myself for this month. Um, as an alternate um, four-year officer, that will be, I will be completing that training this month. And in our important relations and support, um, our substitute support, our expanded substitute program, I can confirm that we have over twenty-five returning substitutes for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. With our policies and updates, we rolled out our new power school initiative and our onboarding process, which has been very beneficial to all of the employees here. Now you can see all their certificates, all their benefits. Um, they can see everything in one place, which is excellent. People are enjoying being able to go in to see all of those great things. Um, background checks and licensures, all new hires have completed their background checks. And I'm currently working on sending some information for licensure for some of our current teachers. Um, we have evaluation um, coming up in September for all the um, building principals. They will start their evaluations in September. Um, let's see, and upcoming priorities we have, I'm going to finalize any new new hires for our onboarding, um, continue our recruitment and um, we're going to conduct a division-wide climate survey in October. And lastly, I'm going to launch in September the HR Corner Newsletter to give updates on health and wellness and any policies that may have changed um, in the coming months. So this is my report and I hope to continue to give you our great news as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So you did. All right, and I would like to let everyone know that our directors' reports are open for the public if you need to refer to any of those. All right, so we'll move on now to action items. We do not have any facility use requests. And I believe we're going to get uh, information from Ms. Ashton over the Title IX.
Yes, good evening to the new members. Do you want to, actually, some student trainings in Title IX and sexual harassment as well as um, prevention in response? Um, and so as part of that, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, both of these are in accordance with the Code of Virginia, um, the school board had to adopt policies requiring our students in grades nine through twelve. So our students in ninth and tenth grade take a Title IX and sexual harassment prevention training models, which we created for the Department of Education. Our students in grades nine through twelve are required to complete opioid overdose prevention. The way that Northumberland High School will be implementing that is our ninth through tenth graders in the health classes will receive the training in Title IX as well as opioid prevention. Our eleventh and twelfth graders for this year, since it's the start, we receive it in the history classes. Then moving forward, those trainings will be only solely happening in the health education classes. Now there is an opt-out, so there will be a better time to do it. That is, that has to go to families of our high school students because the families can decide to opt their students out of this training. So that's um, that is the new training in, in a very short summary.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Adam Scher, I'd like to make a motion that um, we adopt the um, student training on Title IX and opioid overdose presentation, present, prevention, I'm sorry, as mandated by the Code of Virginia concerning all students in grades nine through twelve um, who must receive instruction on these critical topics and that the attached presentation be made part of the school policy at this time.
All right, thank you for that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments? Vote? Uh, all right. Now we'll be talking with uh, Mr. Reagan on the UHY allotment request.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Mr. Basie, he's on the Zoom call.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate your letting me join and uh, regret not being able to be there in, in person tonight. Um, thought I'd prize you on the status of twenty-five and twenty-six and the, the allotment request. Uh, twenty-five, we have entered all of the purchase orders and, and invoices for payment except for one, uh, which if entered, will take the appropriation category negative, which is what I was fearful of uh, when we went back to the board for the la- latest supplemental request that the cushion that we were provided with the um, second supplemental appropriation was so narrow that, you know, one invoice could kick a category out of um, out of balance and, and be uh, the invoice presented would be in excess of the budget that has been provided. I do believe that we will have enough surplus in another category to offset the deficit in this, uh, I believe it's administration uh, and, and health uh, category. So we won't need to ask for additional money, but we will need to reprogram money from one of the categories where there's a surplus to one of the, to the category where there's a, currently a deficit when this invoice is presented uh, for payment. So I'm, I'm hopeful that twenty-five uh, will be able to be cleared uh, by the end of this week after a board action. That we'll be able to put uh, twenty-five uh, in the, in the rearview mirror. So that is the status of twenty-five. Uh, now let's move on to twenty-six. And for, I'm gonna go back in time a little bit. Uh, based on what I have read and what my under. Twenty-six budget submitted and approved by this and what was submitted to and approved by the county board uh, has been allotted in quarterly allotments. Okay, so with these quarterly allotments, that means we get one quarter of our budget loaded at the very beginning of each quarter. All right, so we have currently the budget of, well, we have budget available to us to spend for Sep, for July, August and September. These quarterly allotments assume that we incur our costs evenly throughout the year. Uh, that is an erroneous assumption. There are, are numerous examples of uh, contracts that we enter into with vendors that have very discreet payment dates that are not evenly throughout the year. So for instance, we may have a technology purchase. And the best analogy I can give you is to assume that we have a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar technology contract that is due and payable on August fifteenth. Because of the quarterly allotment, I've only got thirty thousand dollars of that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars available to me to pay that hundred and twenty thousand dollar invoice that is due in, in August. So we have numerous instances where we can show that the historical payment patterns of the normal course of business of schools operations do not follow an even pattern of payment in July, in August, in September, in October and so on. So what we are requesting and we prepared an analysis for you uh, to approve, it is not any additional money. There is no additional money in this request. We are still operating within the total fiscal year twenty-six budget that has been approved by this board and approved by the county board. But we are requesting that those funds be allotted to us and released so that they're available for us to be able to pay today. Um, in addition, this, that's a, a large part of the analysis. The other part of the analysis is there are numerous monthly recurring expenditures for items like uh, power for fuel purchases. Uh, other costs where you're incurring them month in and month out. And the historical way that the process has worked is an invoice comes in, a purchase order gets processed, so the invoice can get paid. That is not a, a fiscally sound way to um, process that transaction. What is a more efficient way to process and a less costly way of processing is to calculate an estimate of how much we will spend per. is to calculate an estimate of how much we will spend per year in that monthly recurring payment that is part of the budget. Enter one purchase order for the year upfront for that. And then we present the invoices against that large purchase order and monitor the spend to make sure that we are spending prudently through the rest of the year. Again, the best analogy I could give is that we would enter upwards of twenty, thirty, forty purchase orders for the various power payments that were made during the year, which every single time we enter a purchase order, there's administrative cost of the time to enter that purchase order and to analyze that, that we are trying to reduce those costs. So in front of you, what you have is a request to approve an allotment of our, an estimate of, I think it's around $1.4 million for the monthly recurring and around $900,000 for the more discreet contractual payments, so that we can effectively and efficiently administer the financial operations of the school district. Again, I can't emphasize this enough. This is not additional budget request that is being made. It is a request to free up those funds currently beyond the quarterly allotment so that we can process these items for payment. I have all of these purchase orders for twenty-six ready to go as soon as this allotment gets approved. If the allotment doesn't get approved, we're going to have to redo our, figure out how much we can pay in this current quarter and go back to the vendors, especially for these large contractual ones, and renegotiate purchase terms. Because a lot of these purchase requests that are out there are in accordance with the contractual terms. And if we can't pay in accordance with contractual terms, we may owe some penalties. We may owe some interest. We may owe some other things that are out there that in my mind are unnecessary costs for the county school board to incur for a policy choice that we have made. And again, I'll say it for a third time, this is not additional funds. These are part of the existing budget that we're requesting to be freed up.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Reagan. Does any of you have any questions?
Yeah, two questions. Mr. Reagan, five representative. I've been attending all of the Board of Supervisors meetings and all of, every single one of them actually, either online or in person. And I've heard all your presentations and everything, and I do have some questions. The first one is, have your team identified all the payments that are clumped together in a particular quarter in addition to quarter one, which I'm gonna call July through September, and in quarters two, three, and four?
Yes, yes, we have that analysis both in the aggregate annually as well as scheduled out by month. So that you can see the historic payment patterns, at least for twenty-five. And I'll recall if we went back to twenty-four, but I know I've got that analysis for twenty-five. And one thing that I didn't make clear in my previous remarks is that the allotment request that we are asking to be released is only for ninety percent of what the historic costs for those vendors were in fiscal year twenty-five. So that is definitely below the level of the total amounts that have been approved in the twenty-six budget request or the budget that was approved. But we did not want to, or feel it right, to request that 100% of those funds be fully allotted at this time because we wanted to respect the wishes of the board, this board, and the county board to make sure that we are fiscally administering these payments prudently. And so we requested the allotment at ninety percent of the fiscal year twenty-five payments, which again are below the amount for those vendor payments that are inherent in the 2026 approved budget. I hope that made some sense.
Okay, along those lines then, if we have to go and renegotiate contracts with vendors, is there additional funds that are going to be needed to renegotiate those contracts? And where is that money gonna come from?
Without a doubt that, so if any time you have to reopen and a contract that's already been executed and the vendor is changing the payment terms to ones that are more favorable to us and less favorable to them, you know, and think of it in this term. You know, is a vendor going to give us more favorable terms if we pay them once a year upfront? Or pay them monthly for twelve months out of the year? They're inherently going to favor getting paid upfront. So any change to those payment terms will invariably be adverse to the school board's interest. I don't know how much that would cost. It would be more. And that would necessitate finding other areas in the 2026 budget to cut in order to compensate for those additional costs. And I have not had a chance to do any analysis like that yet. And it would be very early in the fiscal year to be able to calculate an area where we already have to cut.
Okay, a couple more questions. Have all the bills for 2025 that have been submitted to UHY been paid, and if not, why?
They have not all been paid yet because there, especially there's one again where the budget, we don't have enough budget in that category in order to pay that bill. So we will be needing a supplemental request to pay that or in order to be able to pay that. So that's the reason that particular one. The rest of them, again, it's been a chore to get all these past invoices that did not have purchase orders. And again, I want to emphasize, these are in many instances invoices for liabilities that the school district incurred in 2025 without having a valid purchase order in hand to encumber those funds. So we've had to go back into the system, enter those purchase orders, and then once those purchase orders are entered, then have to enter those invoices for payment. I've been pushing as hard as I can to get those paid as timely as I can. But the quality of the data that was provided to us was not the greatest in the world. It's necessitated a lot of research to make sure that, one, whether any of those invoices that were being presented did in fact have purchase orders. And if they didn't have purchase orders, then figuring out what category to charge them to and make sure that there was sufficient budget authority to do so. So we've gone about this as diligently as we can and as quickly as we can. But it is extraordinarily difficult to wave our hands and magically have all of this get paid when there was so much bad historical data that we had to sift through to get these things into the right place.
I understand that and I appreciate that. We are two months, or in our second month of fiscal year twenty-six. With that being said, I have to assume that these POs that are waiting, I have to assume two things, and if I heard you correctly, the first one is is that all the POs that can be paid have been paid, except those for which appropriations need to be made. Is that correct?
Purchase orders, I believe, have been entered. I don't know. I will have to go back to check whether or not the fiscal year twenty-five invoices presented against those purchase orders have been paid. Remember, purchase orders are purchase orders, invoices are invoices. The correct sequence, which has historically not been followed by the public schools, is that before you incur an obligation, before you go out there and get someone to invoice you for anything, you enter a purchase order obligation.
I'm not asking about, or, Mr. Reagan. What I'm asking about is what you're doing now. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. So-
So we are going back through and entering all of the purchase orders for invoices that were just presented to us without purchase orders. So we're having to go back and create these that should have been recorded prior to us even getting in the door. That has taken time.
I understand that. That's not my question. My question was that all the purchase orders have been submitted, UHY have been paid. And if not, why? That was my original, hold on.
Right, right.
Hold on, let me, so my question is now, if the purchase orders that are currently held by UHY, those are only ones that are being held because there's no appropriation funding for them. Is that correct?
So you, so my understanding is that not all of the invoices that have been charged against the purchase orders have been paid yet. I'm hopeful that that process will get completed by the end of this week.
Okay, and are they inquiring additional fees because they're not being paid?
They're, potentially.
Okay. That was my second question, sorry. In regards to the new finance director, has she been briefed, lacking a better word, on all of these policies and procedures that you're reviewing? And is she part of that process going forward?
We are in, yes, we are in frequent communication and have a laundry list of items that are process-driven, steps that need to be taken to make sure that the appropriate financial oversight is being exercised not only by the finance folks, but by all the appropriate management that has been empowered to manage their own budget. And making sure that they're included in the approval process as well.
So is currently that training going on with the new finance director? In terms of working with the schools and identifying how that process, between the school finances and the county finance director, is going forward to make the issue of the budget transparent?
Yes, we are, we are working through that daily by email and by phone calls.
And is there a record of that process and procedures being done with the new finance director? Being written down anywhere so that we can have some kind of procedures and policy manual to refer to if any issues arise in the future?
Yes, everything that we are doing, we are writing a how-to steps with screenshots from the system that will show anyone, you know, the appropriate steps. We are writing policy memos as we go along on all this. Not talking war and peace. Again, I know I've used that analogy before. We're trying time, you know, each time to write up very specifically, here's how this process should work, here's who needs to approve what, at what level. Here are the screenshots for the entry into the system. So yes, when we, when we reduce our roles, there will be documents that are able to be followed by school's personnel on how to do all of this as we step away from this role.
So as you write these policies and procedures that you're generating, how are you gonna correlate that into specific job responsibilities for not only the school division, but also for the new finance director and the county finance department? So that there's a historical-
Yeah, I do think that the, the finance director will need to then correlate all of those with the assistance, again, probably of human resources personnel to incorporating that information into any job descriptions, job expectations, et cetera. They will have a roadmap with that, but that, that process has not yet started. No, sir.
Okay, that was my question. Are there any issues, financial issues, that you foresee being problematic in the way that the system is currently set up? Where the county takes over the finances of the schools through a finance director? And the roles and responsibilities for the people that work on both sides? This is a complicated, more complicated system than we previously had, but it's a more accountable system?
No, nothing that I see. The largest complicating factor in the effective and efficient execution of the financial management of the schools is the quarterly allotment.
So I believe your contract runs out at the end of September. Is that right?
I believe that's correct.
Do you anticipate your services needing, being needed longer than September? Because this seems pretty complicated, writing policies and procedures. I can tell you, I can attest, take a very long time because there are many people that have to get their eyes on them. So what do you anticipate that timeframe to be?
I mean, I think we will have decent policy documents because we are documenting this as we go along by September thirtieth. I mean, that's what we're contractually obligated to do, and that's what we'll do. I do believe that it would be prudent to have some further monitoring post September thirtieth by someone. It could be us, it could be another party, if the schools or the county so chooses. I haven't, I've been so focused on trying to get twenty-five entered and then this initial wave of all of the twenty-six in the system and this analysis for the allotment request done, that I haven't really had a chance to think about what post September thirtieth would look like. There's been a whole lot of moving parts just to get us to where we are today.
So that kind of clears out my twenty-five, but my twenty-six question is, are we incurring late fees and other fees in the- and other fees in the 26 budget because we need to do this appropriation?
I think that is a likely outcome if we cannot prevail upon the vendors to waive those fees. I know that Dr. Leslie and I are going to be working on some language to provide to those vendors, to ask them for a waiver of the late fees.
So I'm just trying to make a point for everyone, to be honest with you. We did our 26 budget with the anticipation that there wouldn't be late fees and there wouldn't be all of these extra fees. I'm just curious as to if our budget becomes very tight, where that, where those fees, the funding for those fees is going to be coming from.
Right.
I guess I'll rephrase it and make it a question for you, Mr. Reagan. Are you going to present?
I don't...
Are you going to present?
I mean, I have not had a chance to go back and go through contract by contract to figure out which ones might be late fees, how much that might be, and what the impact on the budget is. If that was the request on this, no, I haven't. I'm not sure that staff could locate all of the agreements candidly, based on the difficulty that getting some past information has had. So if that is a request of the board, you know, I would ask that the board prioritize the order of tasks that they would like for us to do in terms of getting 25 over the finish line, get 26 purchase orders in, get 26 invoices paid, and, you know, just trying to figure out where you want that priority to lie.
I am, I'm not asking that, sir. I'm just asking where the funding's coming from. You are, I assume, making a presentation for the supervisors this week, asking for the appropriations if the school board passes it. I want to make sure that there's no surprises for the board of supervisors and that you make sure that you bring up all the concerns that the school board has tonight, and I've been the voice of that, to the board of supervisors, so they're fully aware that additional funding may be needed from the board of supervisors in terms of late fees and things that have not been seen. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I had thought I had included some wording to that extent in the document that I believe was presented to you on the allotment, that, you know, I am concerned that there are penalties and interest that will need to be paid for any of these contracts where payments are due and payable now in the month of August, in the month of September, that are going to benefit periods beyond this quarter, that I just, we just don't have the allotted budget to be able to pay those.
Well, those are all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Curran. Mr. Reagan, I just had a question. Approximately how many UHY employees are working on the finances for Northumberland County Public Schools?
I've had six. We've had two people that have assisted with the tax situation and myself and three others have been dealing with the 25 and 26. I tried to have one person doing the 25 analysis and had two people doing the 26 analysis. So I've already had now six people who've been working on this.
All right, so six people, and we're still not caught up. And then, were there no...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What did you mean by that?
We're not caught up, so I know we've got six people working on it. Question is, were there no blanket POs in UHY? I know the school system had blanket POs for, for example, Dominion Power Maintenance and Food Services. Were they not in place prior to you coming onboard?
Not, I think food service was. I'm not aware that they were for maintenance or for power. I certainly don't recall seeing any like that.
All right. Thank you so much. That's all the questions we have.
I have one of...
So I guess...
Question, Mr. Reagan? I'm sorry. This board would like to be briefed more often by yourself. This is the first briefing, I believe, that we've gotten from you since UHY's been onboard, and this board needs to be equally informed as much as the board of supervisors, because we're making decisions as well. So I would ask that, that any additional briefings that this board is briefed, as well as the board of supervisors.
I agree.
Absolutely, and I think as Doc, I would hope that Dr. Leslie would attest to the fact that I have emphasized that in virtually every time that I have been requested to go in front of the county board. My comment has been that we really need to brief the school board first and, you know, respect the statutory and fiduciary responsibility of this board. It has made me terribly uncomfortable to have to go present to the county board without having briefed this board. I want you to, and I hope Dr. Leslie will attest to the fact that I've had that conversation with her on several different occasions, and because of the nature of the calendar of the various board meetings, what I envision will occur on a go-forward basis is that, you know, at your September meeting, we will present you with the August, or excuse me, with the July financial results, and then those July financial results, after they've been presented to you, will be presented to the county board. But the goal in all of this is to brief you, allow you to take the appropriate action, and then it goes to the county. And I just, I want to emphasize that that has always been my goal, our goal, if you say.
And I will say that Mr. Reagan has said that at a number of board of supervisors meetings and has the agendas. We have had some offsets where unfortunately the board of supervisors' meeting ended up being before the school board meetings, where the plan is. If and when that happens in the calendar month, that he would double his presentation, however the calendar worked out, in order to ensure that both boards receive the information.
All right. Any other school board comments or questions? Nope. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Reagan.
Thank you. Is there going to be a motion on the allotment request or a discussion on the allotment request?
That's what, that's what we're trying to move forward to do right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the UHY allotment request as presented this evening?
With the comments of the board?
With the comments.
I shall move.
Okay, with the comments of our school board. All right, I have a second. Any more comments? Vote. All right. Thank you so much. All right, so now we're moving on into our open public comment section. If we have anyone on, we do, okay? All right, I just want to read that in-person public comments. Persons wishing to speak during the public comment section will sign up on the sign-up sheet. Each speaker will have three minutes for public comment. If we have anyone online for public comment during this public comment period, online participants can raise their hands by dialing star nine, and the host will unmute the caller at their time and will allow them to speak. Each speaker online also has that three minutes of public comment time. Okay? Now we have Ms. Pika.
Dr. Pika. So especially to give compliments to you tonight, and we'll start with that. I have to say, the new school website is phenomenal. Thank you for increasing transparency. Thank you for the great work Ms. Ashton is doing and Mr. Beatty with the quality of the website. I love that the live feeds, there's a lot of good stuff that's up there. I hope that that transparency continues on. I noticed that the school board still has not posted meeting minutes since November of 2024. So those minutes have been approved in different meetings, but they're still not made public. I have requested again from the chairman that those minutes be posted. I believe they, of them were approved in the last meeting, but they're still not posted on the website. I applaud financial efforts to increase transparency. I'm disappointed that there is no information available on the checkbook or the revenue, but since we haven't had a revenue report since January, I would rather not post something, make a mistake and post something that's incorrect. I myself have been keeping a checkbook for the past three years, and before you ask if there's going to be fees and late fees moving forward, you need to ask how much we've already paid. So in the rapid schedule that was done, the documents that Mr. Reagan posted were not made public, but I noticed there's one that was for twice the amount it was scheduled for in the budget in September of 2024. So we've got multiple instances where, unless you guys are on the checkbook, POs. So approving these check registers, I can give you examples from past three years because I've been keeping a checkbook in Excel for what's been paid and what hasn't been paid. Mr. Reagan had announced that there's appropriations, yes, that is not because the board of supervisors thinks that the bills need to be paid every quarter, it's because of the lack of trust. So I applaud this, the board can take over the finances, that's critically important. And as Mr. Reagan was identified in every, it's him and 25 people to correct all the mistakes that have happened. Once they finally figure out what happened in '25 and '24, we'll have a picture for '26. I don't think you should approve this 90% yet, because the money is in good, quarterly appropriations are a tribe and trial process that are used at every budget cycle. The fact that we still don't have the data accurate, 10% of this budget, where's the county finally, they just had to borrow $500 to pay the rest of the bills. So I applaud the transparency that's starting to come out. I heard Mr. Reagan say, we still don't know how many contracts we have onboard. That doesn't surprise me. I've asked questions about the contracts through a public process for years and haven't gotten those. The board of supervise hasn't either. I'm looking for great transparency. I'm going to keep a checkbook this year to make sure that, at least as a citizen, I'm informed, I can do quite a part to make sure that the board of supervisor, at least my supervisor, is informed as well. Thank you.
I have a comment on Ms. Pika's comments. Madam Clerk, can you just make sure that the November 2024 meeting minutes are posted as soon as you can do it and have that taken care of? Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else for public comment that's here this evening? Nope. Do we have anyone online that would wish to comment? Nope. All right, so we'll move on to board member comments. Does anyone have anything to say?
Yeah, I'm really kind of, really proud of the beta people and the experiences they had. Just to watch them get up here and just struggle to speak in public in front of us and do such a remarkable job on a life experience that they probably wouldn't have gotten if they weren't in Northumberland. It just makes me proud that the schools are investing in our children like that. I also want to thank Michelle. Several comments were made tonight about the website. I know you had a lot to do with that as well, and I just want to make sure you're recognized.
Rachel Hall.
What did I say?
She said Rachel Hall did a lot of work.
Oh, and Rachel Hall. Kudos. And then finally, in terms of transparency, I'm glad that it's being recognized that the school board is trying to be transparent, because we really are, because it's all in our best interests, and more importantly, it's in all the best interests of our students, that we are transparent. We have a lot of work to do, and if you can't tell by the questions I asked Mr. Reagan where I'm at, and I'm not going to take my foot off the throttle in terms of anything to do with transparency that's going to help our children. So we're going to continue, we have a lot of work to do, we're going to get it done, we're going to make sure we work in unison with the county, the new finance director, the superintendent, but we're also going to make sure that we have policies and procedures in place that if you leave, we don't have to go back and try to find out what those policies and procedures were. And we have a lot of work to do with that in the division at multiple levels. I think Ms. Lee alluded to some of those tonight, and I appreciate all the efforts that you've done. You've only been in the role a short period of time, and obviously, you had a checklist that's nine miles long, so kudos to you. Let's just make sure that those policies and procedures get into job descriptions so that we're not reaventing the wheel every time somebody leaves. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for all your hard work. It really is appreciated. I know that the high school principal, I read all the emails that go out, very thorough at all the schools, so I do appreciate all the hard work that was done over the summer to get us ready for school this year. I just want to say thank you personally. Sorry, I'm winded tonight.
And I just want to welcome everyone to the new school year. We have lots of new faces, lots of positions that have been filled. We are very tickled to hear that we only have a few openings left, which compared to a lot of school divisions that attest to all the hard work of all of our staff, but especially to Ms. Lee getting that done. But I do want to welcome everybody and know that we're here to work together. The board is going to work together. We're dysfunctional sometimes, but we all have the heart for these children. We always have. We wouldn't be in this role if we didn't, and we're all going to work together and get through this school year and make it one of our best years. So I appreciate all the hard work behind the scenes as well as up front with everyone. Thank you so much.
I'd like to piggyback on that comment, "Forward Together." Thank you, Dr. Leslie.
Yes.
I think that's a very appropriate slogan, model, whatever you want to call it, our values for this year, "Forward Together." So thank you all for what you have done, and thank you in advance for what you're going to do.
Ms. Wayne? Good idea. All right, anything else? All right, I get to say the magical words. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:32?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening.